Hey, everybody. Good evening. I have seven o'clock. Hope everybody can hear me. I know the meeting is going to work on to a meeting. Bob Jettson will be placing the notice of the public meeting in a minute. Lisa, will you please read the rules of the meeting?
This is a web-based virtual public hearing, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being recorded, both audio and video.
Can anybody hear me? Anybody hear me now?
Yes, we were able to hear you.
I'm talking myself.
We can hear you. Okay, I'll begin again. This session is being recorded, both video and audio. Lisa Catanio, the executive administrative assistant, and Michael Simmons, the town's IT director, will be the meeting administrators. A link to the video, audio is posted. Most people attending the meeting will be muted.
Can anybody hear me now?
Yes. Most people attending this meeting will be muted. The town council members and staff will not be muted. Individuals will be unmuted at the time they are recognized to ask a question. The town council members and staff will generally be keeping video themselves on throughout the meeting unless they are attending via telephone only. Individuals desiring to speak will be asked to state their name and address and give their home address. We will read the public hearing rules at the start of the public hearing. Please use the chat feature or raise your hand. Members of the public may only speak during a public hearing and only after being recognized. If a member of the public speaks outside of the public hearing or creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the meeting administrators or the town council chair. Well. You have to enter a PIN. I just sent you the PIN. No, it's right on the system. Could you see it? I'm going to send it to you by text. Okay.
I'm asking if he can hear us.
Tom, can you hear us? Tate? You can't hear us.
Yeah, I can hear you. I can't hear Tom.
Who's that?
It's Anthony.
Or Anthony? No, it's Tom Kane.
No, we're trying to talk to Tom.
I think we can see him on the screen, but you can't hear us.
Yeah, I can't hear. Tom's mic is muted as well.
Should we recess?
Okay. Can you hear that sound, Tom? Can you hear it now? Okay, try to speak. Tom?
I didn't hear.
I think, Tom, try to put on your phone. My phone just died.
That's what that could do. Oh, right. Oh, yes, that would do.
All right. Can you hear me? He's got to put the phone to his... Yes.
No one has raised a hand.
No, we can't. I can only hear you by the phone.
Okay. What am I going to do? See a fan on it?
You can't... I'm going to text you a phone number. You're just going to go in as an audio. Okay? All right.
But you can't talk as an audio, can you?
Yes, I can.
Yes, you can.
Because I could hear him before. Is this registration? What is being gaged? Yes, I'm trying to do. Okay.
Hello? Anybody hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Nope.
We can hear you now, Tom.
Oh, all right, thank you. Okay, I guess I just started the meeting about five minutes ago. I apologize. But I still haven't seen anybody's hands up on the computer. Lisa, is there on my side anywhere? Does anybody want to participate? Anybody want to say anything? Hello?
So far, nobody, Mr. Win.
Okay. Should we just... How about that? Anybody in the council? Any questions for Mr. Jessel?
Yeah. Where's the mic?
Maybe you just speak up. Who have we had? Go ahead and speak up.
I have a question, Paul. It's Mary... Tom, it's Mary Ann.
Okay.
I noticed in the language with regard to the town clerk that indicates the manager would recommend the council would approve the salary. There are also benefits to be paid. Are there any other costs, Paul, that we would have in the coming year that we haven't budgeted for?
I don't... I don't believe so, Mary Ann. If what you're meaning is there any retroactive pay or anything?
That, and then outside of benefits, nothing else, just the normal benefits that a department head gets.
Right. Keep in mind, Mary Ann, that she would not get appointed... The town clerk, whoever that is, would get appointed in October of 2021 to take office January of 2022. So there would be plenty of time to budget whatever.
Right, so the salary wouldn't go into effect until the '21-'22 budget thing.
Well, the town clerk gets a salary now, too, so the only real... The only real change is probably that the town clerk will be able to participate in the pension program that's allocable to department heads.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Win, we have one person that has raised her hand. Catherine Camera.
That would be...
Yeah, this is Catherine Camera, and I know there are other people that are raising their hands, so I don't know what the issue is. So please don't assume that nobody's raising their hand and give it a chance, because I don't know what the problem is. So I'm sure I sent something to the town manager that I'm going to read into the record. I didn't know. I'm glad I sent it, just in case there was an issue. So bear with me. It's rather long, but I do want it in the record. "I believe the council must put aside the charter revision commission report at this time. While the CRC, which is what I refer to as the commission, did a lot of work and proposed needed changes, Chairman Rob Kane did not lead the CRC to perform the job specified by the town council, and a revised charter revision commission with new appointees must be formed to finish the work. The CRC was charged with the following: That the Charter Revision Commission review the present form of government and any alternate forms and recommend which structures is the most efficient and appropriate for Watertown. Number two, that the CRC review and recommend any and all housekeeping language changes. And number three, that the CRC confirm any changes conform with the present state statutes and regulations. It's quite clear that the main charge was the review of the present form of government, but it was barely discussed at one meeting over the course of a year. From June 27 of 2019 to May 27 of 2020, the CRC met approximately 15 times, and only once did the CRC itself hold a discussion of the form of government. That's preposterous. The bulk of the meeting time was spent asking department heads for any changes they felt were needed to the charter and discussions of various sections. Chairman Kane quite clearly did not perform his due diligence of the charge set before the CRC. On January 5, 2020, the Waterbury Republican reported, quote, "In addition to the complications of hiring a town manager was the charter revision question that will be on the November ballot to change the town's form of government from a town manager to a mayor," end quote. Where did the newspaper get the idea about the charter revision question? The paper wouldn't have made it up, so the reporter had been advised by someone. And Town Council Chairman Win was quoted as saying, quote, "So how do you advertise to someone a job that may, in November, change to a mayor?" end quote. The article might be why, at the 10th CRC meeting on January 14 of 2020, Commissioner Andrew Prince requested that the CRC discuss town manager style versus mayoral style of government. Chairman Kane's response to that request was, quote, "We will be taking up the form of government. As soon as I am ready to put it on the agenda, I will," end quote. It was the 10th meeting of the CRC, and Chairman Kane still wasn't ready to put it on the agenda. It should have been on the very first agenda and every meeting agenda following until fully reviewed, discussed, and analyzed with the voices of the public. I am certain the public would have attended the meetings if it had been. People do not care to attend meetings to hear about housekeeping language changes, but they will show up if there's a discussion about changing their government. I, for one, went to all but two of those meetings because I was waiting for this discussion. I didn't go to the one meeting that it was discussed because it wasn't obvious to me that that's what was going to be the discussion. So at the next meeting on January 28 of 2020, there was no mention of what would be discussed at the upcoming February 11, 2020, meeting. When the agenda was posted just a few days before, it listed, quote, "Town government/town manager qualifications, section 501," end quote, "as an item for discussion." Really? Was that title supposed to inform anyone that a discussion was going to occur about alternate forms of government? Right here, you can see Chairman Kane was only interested in discussion on the qualifications of a town manager. At that February 11, 2020, meeting, the 12th meeting of the CRC, with only three to follow, Chairman Kane asked the CRC to consider a New Haven Register newspaper article about Hamden. He said there are 29 towns that have manager council government, and there is an argument throughout Connecticut for that style of government. You can't take Chairman Kane seriously. There are 169 municipalities in Connecticut. According to Chairman Kane, less than one-fifth have manager council government. Where is the argument of that style throughout Connecticut? This was 12 meetings, and over seven months in, and his response to the main charge of the town council was to talk about a newspaper article. Why didn't Chairman Kane ask the mayor or a first-electman to address the CRC about their government? A Q and A with real representatives. Chairman Kane further stated he thought the CRC was on the right path, and when there was mention that there was not much clamor from the public on the topic, he said, which I am quoting from the minutes, quote, "The good news to that: We have had a public hearing, and we will have another, and the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on the decision that we made here tonight," end quote, leaving one to believe that he would be open to discussion at the next public hearing, which turned out to be untrue. The Waterbury Republican article that followed that meeting quoted Chairman Kane as saying, "In our process, we came to the conclusion of, if it ain't broken, don't fix it," end quote. To say there was a process is laughable. One meeting about a newspaper article cannot be defined the process. Next, 173 people petitioned the CRC to say that it is broken, and they want it fixed. Yes. During the month that followed that article, when townspeople became aware of the action of the CRC, Sean Butterly and Richard Avolaeta secured those signatures to present at the March 10, 2020, meeting. There certainly was public outcry at the next public hearing with 173 people filing a petition to put mayoral form of government on the ballot for a vote and one voice asking that the government remain the same. If the COVID pandemic had not hit, more signatures would have been obtained, but 173 to one should have been enough to tell Chairman Kane he had more work to do. And how did the CRC respond? On May 27, 2020, the majority party voted against a recommendation to the town council to bring the form of government up to referendum and wait to finalize the charter revision, failing 6 to 3. How can the majority CRC simply vote away what they were charged to do by the council with a 173-1 support margin from the public? Chairman Kane and Commissioner Donio felt that the public should have participated throughout the CRC process, but for seven months, they didn't even discuss the form of government. As soon as they did, the public came to life. Was it Chairman Kane's plan from the beginning to hold off on this charge until the end and then close out the CRC? It certainly appears so. This should have been the first matter handled by the CRC, as it was the main charge from the town council. The public would have weighed in over the year of meetings rather than scramble at the very end when they became aware. There was absolutely no review of other forms of government in accordance with the charge. A newspaper article about Hamden and a few opinions that everything seems fine is a far cry from a review. People of Watertown deserve much, much better than that. Um, excuse me. Sorry. Um, you, as the council, must start over. Hold what the CRC has done to date and vote out members of the CRC who are not willing to work on an alternate form of government to present to the voters. We know who those six commissioners are. Put new members on the CRC, finish the job that was asked of them from the start. Hold open hearings with the public on this one issue to get a real sense of what the voters want. Then the CRC can make an informed decision if it is time to present a new form of government to the people for vote and what it would look like. Zaga Antonetti said, "This is not the time to upend the government," but she's wrong. This is exactly the time to get this started. The last time this was voted on was more than 30 years ago, and there are plenty of new people in Watertown who should get the chance to be heard like the voters did in the 1960s and the 1980s. Yes, the time is now, and the people are demanding change. As you can see in Attorney Jessel's July 8, 2020, letter to the chairman win, which is included in your package for tonight, the only way the voters have a chance to be heard on this issue is through recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission. If the town council does not revamp the Charter Revision Commission and hold them to a serious targeted review with open-minded hearings to listen to the residents' thoughts about an alternate form of government to be voted on, then it is the town council majority party who will take responsibility for ignoring the petitioners and silencing the vote. The voters will not soon forget Chairman Kane's notoriously arrogant comments. Any council member who closes out the CRC will have to face those same voters when up for reelection. If you believe in your heart, you hold a seat on the council to represent the wishes of the people of Watertown. You need to give this matter serious thought. Thank you.
Mr. Win, Jeffrey De Smaris would like to speak.
Um, I just had a... I just had a quick question for Attorney Jessel, if that's okay. I just wanted to check and see, given the timeframe involved that the council did not render a vote on the Charter Commission report, whether or not, from my understanding, it has to do so within 15 days. Is that correct?
It has to do so within 15 days of its last public hearing.
Right, the last public hearing.
Right, which is today.
Which is this one.
This evening.
So this is... So today is... Okay, so as of today, today would be the last day, so a vote would have to take place today, the latest day.
No, 15 days after the last public hearing.
After the last vote, so 15 days after today. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I don't see anybody else.
If there's not anybody else, I'm just going to state that...
I see Rachel trying to raise her hand. Rachel and Jonathan. Rachel is waving her hand, and so is Jonathan.
I continue.
Am I recognized to speak?
Rachel?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, I just... I wanted to make a couple of comments as a member of the town council and a former member of the Charter Revision Commission until I was elected to the town council and as a previous member of the last Charter Revision Commission that we had. Um, and there's a few things that I think that the charter needs to be looked at. I think more time needs to be spent on it.
What the hand? Is it red or green?
Who is that?
It should be red. Click on it and make it red. Okay.
Okay, I'll continue.
Go ahead.
Please.
So one of the things I did before I was a member, when I was first appointed to be a member of the commission, is I did a lot of research, and I looked at quite a few other charters, and especially charters of towns and similar size and similar towns to ours. One of the things that many other charters have is a more robust ethics section that really creates a more clear process, that's more detailed. And at least at the time that I was on the commission, we didn't talk about that, and I think that's something that needs to be considered. One other thing that I brought up, which I look back now and, of course, was somewhat prescient, was I worried that we didn't have a provision in the charter for any special circumstances, and especially with regard to emergency procedures. A number of other towns have those, and obviously, we're in an unprecedented time right now. Clearly, we're following the guidelines of the governor, and there hasn't really necessarily come up the need for any special powers during this time, but it would certainly be nice to have that in the charter as a... As, you know, just knowing that, obviously, these things can happen, and we would like to have the authority to act quickly as needed. Another issue that concerned me was that one of the really major changes that was made was that figures for bidding and other issues were doubled, and there wasn't a mathematical equation put to those. It wasn't adjusted for inflation, and maybe those numbers are accurate. It just didn't seem like there was a study or anything based on data used to justify those numbers. And considering that's a lot of the work we do as a town council, is that seems like a significant issue that maybe was not addressed fully enough. The other issue was the police commission, and I know that we had a presentation on the town council and the process for the complaint procedure, and it very well could be adequate and appropriate. I just wonder, in light of the situation we're in with Black Lives Matter and the death of George Floyd and some of these other issues, if we need to have a second look. And then finally, you know, the form of government, when I was on the commission in the beginning, there were a number of members of the commission who did ask Commissioner Kane when we were going to talk about that, because it was our belief that we had to talk about that first, because obviously, everything else in the charter would need to change if we had decided to go to a different form of government, and it did get postponed and postponed. And I was no longer on the commission when it was finally discussed, so I can't speak to that. But I do think that the people of Watertown should have a say in that. It should be a democratic process, and they should be allowed to choose their form of government. Thank you.
Okay, we have now had two public hearings. We're going to move this to the town council meeting on the 20th. Obviously, we're probably going to have to talk a little bit in caucus, and the town council has had two questions, Paul. We have a week more for them to ask questions, and this meeting is currently adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Win, we have two people waiting to speak.
Uh, there is none. It's meeting adjourned.
We...
No, no, it's not.
We have a question. No, we have a question. Jonathan Ramsey.
Where?
Um...
We have Jonathan.
I don't see anybody here.
Jonathan Ramsey is waiting to speak, and so is Sean Butterly.
Pardon?
Sean Butterly is waiting to speak, as well as Jonathan Ramsey.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Tom can go.
Go ahead, Sean.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council and the public virtually attending this second council virtual meeting on the Kane-majority Charter Revision Report. I am Sean Butterly of 59 Litchfield Road. Rich Avolaeta and I have been spokesmen since February 173 grassroots petitioners who have requested you to have an advisory manager versus mayor referendum on November 3. We would have had more, but we shut down our drive in mid-March due to COVID concerns. Interestingly, except for former mayor proponent Joe Massey, no one has appeared in front of the Charter Revision Commission this spring or the last town council hearing on June 16 to ask you to block this referendum. I wrote an opinion on July 1. You all have the stance for the proposition that you have the power to do this. I realize, however, that town attorney, Japaul Jessel, has heard from the Secretary of State that you can't. So I urge you to postpone action on the Kane-majority report, or revision report, until after the November 3 election. We have shown you that despite the obstacles of COVID, this town wants to hear more and weigh in on this issue of mayor leadership management. This year, town managers' canal resigned in January. We have had interim managers since. We hear there are 18 candidates for permanent town manager. Who are these people? What's on their resumes? Remember, the person that emerges from the town council selection as the permanent town manager will be our chief executive. He or she will have the same powers as Mayor O'Larry, Mayor Chatfield, or Mayor Dunn from his county towns. We have absolute nil say as to who wins this 18 candidate round robin. We want a tunnel for taxpayers' ask, well, what if we don't like the person you select without our input? Oh, the town manager proponent state, that's easy. The town manager serves, quote, "at the pleasure of the council." Thus, you unpaid town council people can easily dismiss him. Not so fast. When Joe Massey appeared in front of the Charter Revision Commission on March 10, he reminded Chairman Kane and this CRC that about 30... that about 36 years ago, he and I argued for mayoral government and we lost that referendum. Joe correctly noted, I said to the Town Times then, quote, "The people have spoken." That's the same applies Mr. Avola and I and our group to make, if we were, if we were to have a referendum this year. However, Joe Massey did not discuss what happened next during that summer of 1984, the last time the mayor manager versus mayor issue was given to the voters in a referendum. The Democratic majority on the town council, soon after the mayor referendum vote, sought legal advice from fellow Democrat and then-town attorney Franklin Pelosi. Attorney Pelosi correctly noted that the town manager serves, quote, "at the pleasure of the council." The Democratic council chairwoman therefore, along with four other Democrats on the town council, voted to terminate the six-year-serving town manager. Simple, right? No. No one picketed Franklin Pelosi's office for rendering his opinion to take the fire him. Instead, well over 1,000 signatures were gathered against the council chairwoman to recall her from office. It was a huge scandal and a front-page story daily. How many of you town council folks, unpaid volunteers that you are, want to fire a town manager and get into that now strum? I'm guessing no one. What's the alternative to our six-year under, undemocratic mess? Now that is simple. Give our town the same rights of Waterbury, Woodbury, Volkit, Prospect, every other town in our area. And that's what we've been talking about, our area, not Hamden. They have and that we've lost. Let us elect our mayor or chief executive every two years. No more town managers. That's what the Mingled Democracy is all about. And we also stand in positions behind the candidates who bring their positions come down. And finally, Mr. Avola wanted to be on tonight and state that he thinks it's serious enough that Mr. Kane's majority did not listen to the people on this during the COVID crisis, that we've lost our constitutional right to vote on these things and to participate in this. Well, we would challenge the Kane majority reporting court if necessary if the, if the council chooses to bless that report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Jonathan, who's next?
Next.
They're kind of more housekeeping, but I just want to make sure I have a full understanding. Um, in the report, section 301, page five, um, it's talking about how vacancies on the town council were filled. Um, the very last sentence of that is, "The newly appointed members shall serve until the successor is elected at the next regular town election." In the past, that was every four years. Now technically that would be every two years. And right now we have one group of five, one group of four. And I guess my question is, if, if I'm interpreting this right, that five-four kind of fairly balanced from every two years could actually sway and be like six and three and things of that. Um, or is at least the intent is that each group kind of stays as is? But I think the wording in here keeps it a little vague. I'm not sure if this is for Rob Kane or Jessel or.
The fact of the matter is, Jonathan, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, that vacancies are filled until the end of the term or the next biennial election, whichever first occurs.
Okay, I guess my question is, should that be the wording in Charter Revision? Um, I'm, I'm reading.
Can I say something? Hello? That's existing language. Right, that's the.
Correct. Now, when this was past 10 years, nine years ago, whatever it was, we were still on the, everyone gets voted in every four years now.
If you look at section 206, Jonathan.
200.
Which is on top of page four. "A vacancy in any elective office except the Board of Education shall be filled by appointment by the council for the unexpired portion of the term or until the next biennial election, whichever shall be sooner."
So I guess my scenario is with case resigning, would that mean that there's a new election for that seat in November?
Of 2021. It's at a biennial election, which are in the odd years. The even years are state and national elections.
Correct. So in that case, our group of five would then be shifted the opposite year. So I guess my question is.
But, but that person would be elected until the end of.
The expiring.
Ases, right, unexpired term.
Okay.
It doesn't change the, that position is in one four-year term or the other.
Okay. Um, this might not be the, actually I'll skip over that comment, never mind. My last one was on page 12, item I, I guess that's section four. Um, everywhere else we have, police commission capitalized. Might want to capitalize it there as well.
Lisa, who's speaking?
Yes. Yes, Jonathan is speaking.
Is Jonathan still speaking? Who's speaking? I can't understand any of it.
Um, and my next question on page 16, um, it talks about some of the information on the town manager. Um, and it mentions that they have to, when they're first hired, they do not need to be a resident, but once they are, are hired, they need to become a resident of Watertown. Um, are there requirements as far as how fast they become a resident of Watertown?
I don't believe so, Jonathan.
Yeah, I guess my question is, do we need to throw in there within six months, within a year with whatever might make sense?
I mean, I suppose if there are exigent circumstances, that might be difficult.
Okay. And my, where's my question here? This might not be a big issue now, but I know there was people talking about it probably a year or two ago when the state was going through a lot of different headaches with their budget. If the town was ever interested in changing their year-end, which would change their budget year-end, would it be in the form of changing the Charter, the Charter? Let's say if we wanted to make it to a September or December year-end.
I think the statutes dictate the fiscal year for the town.
I'm pretty sure some towns have different year-ends and they're not all June.
Um, not too many anymore.
Okay, because I just know that.
Well, I could talk to you two, but they're now on their fiscal year.
Because I know when there's years and the state is having issues passing their budget and yet we have to pass our budget in advance of the state passing theirs. There's a lot of question regarding funding and stuff on this thing. I didn't know if, if that was the thing that the town wanted. Is this the place to do it or is it, or is it? I guess is the next question.
There is a statute.
Okay. And my last question, I'm not sure if this is for Rob Kane or someone else. We've had a lot of discussion as far as town manager versus mayor. Um, and obviously one's appointed by the town council, one's voted in by the town as a whole. Um, would there be any job description changes if it was someone that was voted in versus someone that was hired? As far as your additional authority or anything that needs job description, pretty much the same.
Well, I'd like to jump in on that, Jonathan, because there's a whole lot, lot of different forms of mayoral form of government. There are strong mayors, there are weak mayors, there are mayors with town managers. Um, you know, there's, you know, frankly, there's a lot of things that would have to be hashed out uh, in terms of how to switch to a mayoral or other elected executive officer head. So it, you know, it's not, it's not just a simple matter of saying he would have the same duties as a town manager because that might not be what everybody's looking for.
Yeah, so if there was a change, the whole job description would be looked at in as far as the power they would have or would not have.
There would be a lot of things in the charter that would have to change. Who makes appointments? Do we still have a town council? Does it have nine? Um, again, there are a lot of, a lot of things that would have to change.
Yeah, thank you.
We have Rose Silvaleski, Mr. Wynn.
Rose, please unmute her. Rose Silvaleski, drop.
Rose, you have to unmute yourself, I can't unmute you.
All right, now it worked. Sorry, Rose Silvaleski at 450 Davis Street, Oakville. Um, I wanted to make a couple of quick comments. Um, I had attended the original public hearing on July 30th of 2019 and made quite a few comments. What, you know, I would have liked to have seen discussed in the process of the CRC, the commission work. And I can honestly say, at least on, on the following meeting of August 27th, you at least listed out items that people brought up and things to be discussed. But then disrespectfully, nothing I brought up was discussed in the finance area. I brought up quite a few points in finance. Never brought up when publicly asked a question and let's look at it. So I, I can't say that anything I brought up or any of the few other people that spoke was any of it ever mentioned publicly in your discussions of the commission. It's like, why do we waste our time? And I think that's a great frustration that townspeople have. Not so much just the mission, but town council meetings, other commission meetings. We bring up information and it just dies. You might listen at that point, but then it just dies. And it's just, it's just disheartening and that's, that's it for me.
I have, I'm not sure if she wants to speak again, but Catherine Camaro has raised her hand again.
Yes, I did raise my hand again, thank you, Catherine Camaro, 31 Cottage Place. I just wanted to piggyback onto what Attorney Jessel just said. He made a very good point about if you were going to change to government, there's various different styles. And that is exactly what I thought when given, the CRC was given the charge was going to occur over numerous meetings. It was exactly what Attorney Jessel just said. The different types of government, how they would work for Watertown, let the people talk about them. That's exactly what I thought that charge meant and that's why I kept going to all the meetings. So I just wanted to make the point. As I understood it, that's what the CRC was charged to consider, various different styles of government than how they would pertain to Watertown. And yes, there's first selectmen, there's mayors with town managers, there's various different styles. But I thought that that was the charge that the town council gave to the CRC and there was a limited discussion in one meeting about a newspaper article and I'm sorry, that just didn't cover it. Thank you.
Lisa, is there anybody else?
I don't see any, anyone else, Mr. Wynn.
Okay, um, I'm going to close this meeting up. It's the second one, the council will meet on January, July 20th. And I will put this in for discussion and, and moving the question will go down on Monday. Thank you very much, everybody.